There you go.
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
More is everybody. I'll call the meeting to order. We do have a forum. I take the motion to approve the agenda and the minutes.
I'll second it.
Alright, motion second. Any changes? Boys, old thing or I?
Alright.
I, I both. Alright, we got an agenda and I think Rich has gone this week, right? To take a few days vacation. Uh, skip along that direction. Val drainage, our MOU not gonna happen?
Yeah, she said her surrounding counties are kind of wishy washy and they don't want to do it. And so then I'm like, and Sarah's on no, and so then I'm like, well, should we do one with just the one county and the other two counties don't want to, and then the other counties with them don't want to, and then, we said maybe we'll just back pocket that for later date if, because she said everything runs really well now and everyone looks a long while now, everyone knows what each other does. But maybe in that case where it's like we have changes of offices or changes of clerks or changes of something that maybe where it doesn't mesh as well, then maybe implement that in. Then everyone's on the same page, but.
Good, well, it's, it is what it is. We can't make them do anything. They can't make us do anything, so. Won't worry about that. Um, no claims this week, great?
Yes.
Or is there?
Oh, there's warrants, warrant.
Oh, yeah, warrants, yeah, okay. Uh, is there a motion to approve the stamp warrant?
I like a motion to approve the stamp, so.
Alright, any discussion on them? Here none, all favor I?
Alright.
I, opposed? Warrant's approved.
Alright.
Um. D seventeen, lot two D. Row bang.
This is the row bang, okay. Yeah, so I talked to him. It's kind of an after the fact, it's been fixed. I guess it happened back in July, his former was out there and so, he's wanting him to be reimbursed for the work that they did. Um, that Pete, Doug Petersburg century had. And then after harvest when the beans are out, so there's a giant hole there still, um, I've refined it with Colton, we're gonna get dirt in there for backfilling stuff for that, but. So I kind of explained in the process that we're trying to do with pulling out the petitions.
For future.
Yeah.
I mean, if he did work.
And I said, if it's an emergency, call me, I'll get hold of the guys, I'll let them know, but I'm like, we still want a paper trail, so.
Doug should come and do it, he's done it a couple times.
Yeah.
Fixed a couple.
Well, it just keeps, uh, record keeping a lot easier.
Yeah.
Of this and that, because.
It'd actually be on your list to call people down in that area down there, because he knows a lot of people could work on it.
Because.
I think it was that tile. Where is it? Gotta be behind, uh, you know, we're down in Row Bang where's, it's the Row Bang farm.
I'm just going off the fact of the picture you sent out. You could put a couple trucks in there, where'd all that dirt go to?
Down to DD twenty-three.
Yeah, but.
In that spot.
Fill it up as that way now. Normally as that dirt flows through the tile line, it builds up as it goes.
Yeah, apparently it happened all at once during that big rain.
So it just went in a hurry.
Good, my guess, it just blew, it must have bad pressure blew and then, through the water started going around this side.
A lot of dirt to move down that tile line.
Because he obviously planted over it.
Right.
So it happened after planting. Which is scary.
Yeah. Okay, well, like I say, it's just. Juice.
He doesn't have a tractor.
Yeah, that one picture has him down.
He doesn't have a tractor.
Yeah, it's a huge truck. Everyone's, I'm with that, they're just about following through, but.
Okay. Um, is there a motion to approve the reimbursements for this repair?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Yeah, for a second?
I'll second it.
Alright, any other discussion? Here none, all favor I?
Alright.
I, opposed? Carries. Oh. Also, any else now?
Um, I, you probably wasn't seeing it on the email, but I know the other two guys knew they, uh, rescheduled the DB seventy-two trial to December fourth and fifth.
Yeah.
It was a scheduling conflict with the judges, so. We didn't have judge.
So I'll go to that in December.
Or they'll figure it out.
Yeah. Hopefully they'll figure it out by then. And then last week, well, Val was gone, I got a call from Dennis Pop. He was working on a tile which they thought was, and I remember after calling back and figuring out which one it was, I can't remember who he said he worked for. They thought it was a issue with, uh, wind turbines over, I want to say Barton area. Um, but once they got down, kept digging, they ended up at the main, the main was a problem, they had, it had been repaired before and there was a mixture of pipe and connection issues, separation.
Yeah.
So he asked if we wanted to wait to fix it till we approved this, and no, if you've got it exposed, fix it, you're there. It was like twenty foot of pipe. But he said it, somebody had patched in at one time, patched in metal into clay and it was separated and came apart, but he went there for the, landowner thinking it was his private tile coming into that problem, then found out it was there, so. I told him to go ahead and fix it, and I'll call him today and find out what it was for sure, Val.
Okay.
But.
We can't expect contractors to stop.
No, and he knows we can come back later, my film, come back, I said, just fix it, you're there, you got guys there to fix it, so.
But when a landowner contacts.
Yes.
A contractor, they could contact us too.
Well, and they thought it was private originally, that's the thing is, we thought we were there fixing this private tile because of, an issue from before. And then when we got there, it kept going, it ended up being the main was the problem, so. And then also, uh, now, did you get, you got one from Travis Meyer then?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I didn't, I didn't put it down.
Okay.
On the agenda today, but yeah, DD eleven main F. Travis Meyer, I think the land owner is Joyce Toppin. Yeah, we found it right on the map. Um, but yeah, thirty-six metal outlet slumped off and separated, and Peterson's gonna fix it.
Yeah.
Because he was nearby.
Fixing one for Gens that we approved, and Travis has stopped and talked to him, and there's a pipe that sticks into the ditch that was tilted down and it separated in, the ditch, so, um, Peterson said he had time to fix it while he was in that area, so he didn't have to move out of there and do it back again, so.
Yeah, I got this one on Friday.
But yeah, she got that one.
That'll be on the next month.
Yeah.
Work orders is technically under the agenda.
Yeah.
Now, if we need to list them separately, I don't know, I mean, I don't think we do.
And if it's on there, it's.
Prove that one too.
Yeah, that's fine. There's seconds to that.
I'll second it.
If you get them on ahead of time, that's fine, if not, it's. If they come in on a Friday, then let's just keep them moving, it goes. So there's a motion and a second.
My motion.
Yeah, I seconded it, yeah. Alright, any other discussion?
Um, I did receive late Friday bills too for Bodie for the twelve main. And then, um, eleven main A, lot A one.
It was spring, right?
Yeah, it's for spring, so he's got those done, so I'll have those on next week for.
All favor I?
Alright.
I, both? Yeah. Passes. Yeah. Anything else drainage related?
No.
Okay, any other many else for Val?
Sneak away.
Could be getting contacted by a landlord and eventually getting another drainage project. Sometime before the end of year, he said he was very initiated, so.
That's good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, payroll claims, I'm sure you'll go through those.
I'll make a motion to approve the payroll claims, I'm sorry, yeah.
Alright, well, they're right.
Alright.
I, opposed? Your claims are approved, any reports?
Nope.
Get some payroll changes. Uh, for Lisa and Marilyn in the sheriff's office. While Jeopardy. Multiple mark to approve, your second?
I'll sign it.
Any discussion? Here none, all favor I?
I, I, opposed?
Carries. Record license?
No.
No? Am I even talking on the canvas? Same with the post-election report, if you do that now. You're gonna do that after the canvas.
Oh, we can do that.
The post-election audit report?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We do that every time there's a motion now.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, Mr. Sliders.
Yeah. Yeah. Alright, we've got our post-election audit report. Time and, uh, everybody involved, their motion to approve the post-election audit report certification.
Motion to approve.
Alright, your second?
I'll second it.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All favor I?
Alright.
I, opposed? Here, is there anywhere I need to sign it?
No. And they don't, they don't hurt, it's just, you know, one more thing to do, but then it's showing again that, everything worked out the way that it did the first time, you know, everything, all the numbers are good, so.
Perfect.
Great question.
Uh, thing building grounds. I see we got our downspout done. I think it should be done, I guess it will. Um, that was plugged, plump full. Grass and whatever, trees. Um, so they cleaned it out, and I wonder if that's all they wanted, I said, no, you're here, your stuff's here, put the second downspout on, just get, get it all directed away from the building, so they continue it and redo, so still, we ask them to, so. Um, we just may have to look into getting that stuff cleaned out annually, but it's gonna take something to get up that high, so.
Yes.
Keep that in mind for future, I guess.
I heard, we're still waiting for the light covers from Vice Electric, I called them again last week, he was checking on to see if they got ordered, the plastic covers, we have a couple of them that were broke in our offices, um, so he's checking on those, and then you were gonna come by and check the landscape.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They'll be in trouble, I'll see this.
I'm, I feel like we just will pull everything out and just put rock down. Less.
Less maintenance.
Maintenance, and it, you know, we could make it look nice still, so.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, plus I invited to get a piece of that, see what it'll take to do that.
Okay.
I see you got a bid from Levi on the boiler.
For twenty-nine bucks a week? He said basically half a service call, because normally there's somebody in town. Um, so they would just stop by when somebody's in town once a week, check things over. And.
I think that's the route we ought to go. I do too.
Does he, how about like our furnace over at Public Health Office and, uh, you know, should we have like a main, like once a year?
Yeah, any furnace needs to be looked at.
I'm looking at it once in the fall.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Before you started up. And I can email him, have him go everywhere, I told him.
Yeah, the treasurer's house has a boiler too.
Yeah, yep. Um, we can have him stop there as well. Um, because I did talk to him, he's gonna come in and clean and look over all of our mini splits. Because they need maintenance. Um, I know Dan has him come in and look at furnaces and that stuff in their place, so we can.
Yep.
Um, we'll have him, and I think he's gonna go to the treasurer's office, we'll have to go there as well, and just if he's got somebody here working, just go to all of them, check them all over.
That's great.
So when you do fire them up next month or November, whatever it is.
There we go.
Should we give it a go?
So we need a motion on this to have them come once a week and check the boilers?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I think it's, it's maintenance, we can just engage him to do it. Um, and then I did meet here with a boiler company out of Austin, L and M Boiler. Um, we looked this one over, he's impressed, never seen anything like it in life, he's been doing it for over thirty years. But he thinks he's got it figured out, um, and told me what we need to keep an eye on, and what to look for, um, when we do go to fire this one up and the treasurer's office. Um, we're going to have them here. Fired up, make sure everything's running properly, so once we start seeing that weather change and we think we're gonna need to run it, I just gotta give him a couple days notice, and they'll set up and have a tech come down. Fire it up, make sure it's good, so I feel. Run nice guys out of Austin, we've been out of it a long time, so. Um, and then.
Nice to have experts looking at them.
Yeah, especially when it's like that. Yeah, so he's never seen one that, that uses water and steam and, he goes, I'll be honest, never seen one like it in my life, but.
Those are old movies.
He says, this looks like it's good, it, you know, works, it just, it's unique. Is that well? So anyways, yeah, when that, we start watching that weather, starts to cool off, then we'll, we'll engage him to come in.
This was a little while ago, but, um, how did things go with the window wells?
I'll do that again.
I have, I forgot, I saw Mike Peterson the other day and I forgot to ask him about that, so I'll, I'll give him a call.
I found a truck, but it was, I don't know how many weeks ago it was.
Yeah, it was quite a while ago, they did that. I'll, I'll retalk him and ask him, see what they found.
See where it went?
Yeah, see if they have any ideas.
That's very much.
I said I did, I did run into him last week, but I forgot to ask him.
Was there any news on the black mold?
No, they must not have made it here last week.
I, I didn't see.
They were, they were hoping to come in here late last week, but they were in Des Moines for some training for a couple days, so if it wasn't, it should be the first part of this week, they'll be coming in to do air quality and all of the courthouse and treasurer's office. Just to see. Uh, anything else, building and grounds? Uh, what about the front door?
Ooh.
Uh, I can look at that.
Yeah, who do we have look at it?
It's, there's an adjustment on that closure. You should be able to, it should just be a screw to blow it down or make it faster, so it'll actually.
Right.
Shut.
Just a sound.
I didn't know if it was just humid or what.
Should be that. I'll, I'll say I'm gonna be around most all day today, so I'll take a look at that.
You got your toolbox.
I do have my toolbox, my old Volkswagen, here too. Um, okay, anything else? Uh, water main, I just sent you guys a email on our water meter quotes, fifteen thousand, I think it was, for everything. Uh, still have to see where we end up with our ERP funds, I think we'll have enough to go ahead and do that as well. Include that as part of the project out there. North Echo, Melissa?
Morning.
Morning.
Morning. I have, um, today and tomorrow, I'll be in the office quite a bit, but then, um, for the next, like, ten days, I'll be out of the office, Wednesday, there's a SPD C advisory board meeting, state SPD C, and then a housing conference planning. Uh, Thursday, I'm at the Alliance and then, but Iowa workforce development has an open house on Thursday from noon to two, if anybody is interested in going. And then, um, Friday is CVN in the cities, uh, I always invite the board members if they wanna come with. Let me know. Um, and then all next week, uh, Monday, I'll be taking off. But then on Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, PDI is in Marshalltown. So it's, it's gonna be spotty. Feel free to give my cell phone a call, I'll be around.
Sounds good. Any questions for Melissa? Yeah, yeah, thanks for the update and have fun with all those afternoon.
You bet.
See ya.
Bye.
People Service, Taylor.
Morning. Um, so yeah, I don't have the actual board report with me, but I do just kind of wrote down some of the highlights, um. Today EP's coming and they're gonna start putting in that telecommunication between wastewater plant and lift station, so that should be done hopefully by just today is all they need, um. Colligan came and they took their resin sample, um, it's at the lab right now, so we're just waiting on results to see.
Okay.
Uh, we also replaced a flow meter with them at the plant that was old and wasn't working right, um. The lift station, we changed out a transducer that had been reading faulty, it would spike the, it was reading like ten foot in the lift station and alarming, and the pumps were just running, there was no water in there, so. Yeah, we got that replaced, uh, right away, Jason from Quality Pump came. Um, we did all the valve exercising for this year, we just did all the valves.
Okay.
And then, we also took our disinfection, uh, byproduct samples, they're like every three years. We gotta do them, um, results came back and everything there was good, so there's no different sample requirements, anything, nothing changes there.
Good.
I guess that's kind of it, everything's kind of moving forward as far as the communication and the headworks room getting everything operating the way it should, um.
Is it gear locks, gear locks won't change it?
It is not, uh, I know Jake's been dealing with that and I'm not sure. I know he's talked to him, they're just getting a date to come up, so.
They've got it.
They're, they've got, I think they've got it, or it should be there soon.
Good.
I'm not exactly sure on that, um. And then the water plant, yeah, just waiting on those test results and then hopefully, they've got an answer for us.
The West Tech? Made a plan to come yet?
And then West, yeah, they, they haven't scheduled a day yet, but it's gonna be either this week or next week, they're thinking somewhere in the next couple weeks.
Okay.
Being able to come up.
Good. Good, I think, uh, Jason hopefully has gotten uh, second quote for our well pumps, we can get that down and get that other tower loaded. Um, but I, he was waiting on that second group, so we'll see how that went, if it's. Doesn't change here shortly, then we're just gonna move towards the first one and be done with it, we need to get it done and, and in action before it gets terrible cold, so, and get it all, if there's issues, do a wall, it's decent weather.
Yep.
Um, and we did get, we just got a quote Friday afternoon for all new water meters everywhere out there.
Okay.
Um, it's, uh, everything, we can get meters, there's a couple of them, we'll just drop new heads in. Um, instead of changes the whole body though, there's a couple we have to change the bodies because they're a different brand of meter, and we can't rebuild those, so let's put a turn in the meter, like the hotels, you know, and. And. Can't remember what the other one was, but, and then the one on with the south warehouse would actually have to be re-pumped, so we might have to stop at the casino and get, change the pumping on that just a little bit.
Okay.
Um, let's say that'll bring all of our meters up to par. Uh, because meters, when they do fail, they usually read less than more. So after so many years, it's just time to update them, but is that something you guys think you can handle, changing those out for us?
Yeah, I think so.
Um, I just have a feeling with the casino and the hotels, it may be uh, late night or early morning kind of thing, um, we'll have to coordinate with them, but to be able to shut their water off for thirty minutes. Obviously the casino would want it done when they're closed, and the hotel, I would assume, would be kind of the same thing before people get up and start moving. Um, so it might be a three or four in the morning kind of deal. But, um, so if you guys want to look at, or you know what they look like, if, um, if we do go forward with this, maybe keep that in mind and say we can have all the meter stuff within a couple weeks, only it didn't have was the four inch, the big stuff, and, and that said it was, uh, wasn't too far out, but. So we'll talk about that more, and let you know, I guess if that's something we want to do, but we should see where we're at for funding on that project, so.
Okay.
That sounds good, um, the camper station meters that's in the parking lot, is that getting updated as well, is that one that's on the list?
Yes, I did.
Are they all?
Top Iowa, is that by the Walcom Center?
Yes.
Yes.
Cause I didn't know there was one out there, yeah.
Okay, there's one, yeah, there's one just for, there's like a camper dump site. It's just one that, when they use the hose there.
Mm-hmm.
You know, meters that.
Okay.
It's been reading really low numbers compared to normally, it picks up in the summer, so I don't.
Take a picture of it, I can run it to you, send it to me.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's in a pit and the pit is full of water.
Really?
I'm not surprised, I wouldn't be surprised if it maybe is frozen before, so, yeah, I'm just not.
Okay.
Sure if that one's working the way it should or not.
Sure, yeah, I take a picture of it, when you get a chance again, and send it to me, and I'll, I'll send it to Dan, uh.
Okay.
I'll, uh.
We'll pump some water, I'll take pictures.
Uh, yeah. Oh, good. Anything else? No, I think that's it, you get anything?
Did you ever get ahold of Raheem's son, the water sample? Ron, or not Ron, but the roots, we're looking for, you, you guys did water samples for him for their onions, or I don't know, whatever, for arsenic or whatever. I said you hadn't got back to him, so.
I would have to check. Do you know what the address would be for that?
Well, they don't have fertile, but I don't have their phone number, I mean, they, they.
Yeah.
For sure you did test for them and they were looking for the results, because they have to meet certain standards to go into California, I think.
To send their product.
Yeah, their water, they, they're, their irrigation water can't.
They, yes, I think they did, uh, they did three tests.
And I don't know what they were, arsenic probably is one, I'm not sure.
Yeah, there was, there's arsenic, uh, if it's the one I'm thinking of, because it was for irrigation.
Yep.
It was, yeah, then it was down my fertile, I think that's what it was, um. I got them two of the results, the other one came back positive for bacteria.
Okay.
Um, they shock chlorinated it and then they didn't run it at all.
Oh.
So I took the sample and sent it in, it, there was too much chlorine.
Too much chlorine.
Um, okay, so they're going through the process of doing that again.
Okay.
Shocking it, and then this time they'll actually run it.
Okay, see, you've been in touch with them probably.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's just been the last month or so, because they're getting close to harvest.
Yeah. No, sometimes, uh, results mean not to be getting out to people, well, they'll, state identity, so I'm supposed to send
Right to.
the copyright to them, I've been having to send a lot.
Okay.
Where I just send them a copy of what I have.
Okay, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yes.
That's all I ask.
Okay, no, yeah, thanks, Taylor.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Or we had discussions.
Well, I'll bring it up now that he's.
Nothing's going.
Well, the, how we're supposed to get ahold of him for reports and stuff?
Yep.
You, you, okay.
What do you, what is your?
Well, well, no, because I'm supposed to be giving, uh, reports of new, uh, septic.
When they're installed.
Why are you supposed to be getting reports of that? I did not know that. Okay.
Of new septic's and then, um.
I will email Keith about this.
Okay.
Okay, new septic's when they're put in and anything else?
And, um, because people, now, do you know, did anybody from there, from people services get with, can't think of his name, they want to sell, that's the one I brought up last week.
Mattson, Daryl Mattson.
They want to sell their mother's place?
Yep, 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 he got with them.
Okay.
Yeah, we contacted him, yeah, because they called me, and then I talked to Daryl, and then that's with that whole business that wasn't, so I called Keith and Keith got ahold of. Yeah, and now we actually have two numbers, and I will maybe send that out to everybody in the county. So you guys have it, we have two guys that if you can't get ahold of Taylor, and Taylor actually put it on his answering thing on his phone, so.
See, and I've never had his number, I always just email him, and then I never.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Because I take a peek at that when I'm driving to town.
Sure, sure, I will, I will, um, send that out to everybody. Um, the sanitarians' numbers and how to get ahold of them.
Okay.
Okay, I will give you that, yes, and I'll check on that new subject, that stuff needs to be all sent to the assessors, okay.
Teresa, are they supposed to record those now? Or is that, I have a transfer inspections, they're supposed to.
Time of transfers, if the groundwater hazard is marked.
Say that again, what?
The groundwater hazard statements.
Okay.
Which come in with any transfer document in my office, along with a declaration of value. However, unless they're exempt, and they have to state the exemption number on the actual transfer document, the deed or
However, unless they're exempt and they have to state the exemption number on the actual transfer document, the deed or. Contract or whatever.
But they're supposed to record those now, right? The time of transfer stuff.
If. If you answer everything correctly, yes.
Okay.
For any new, they have to have a permit number or they have to have the notice of time to transfer that it's going to be demolished at a later date. That's checked marked on that groundwater. And yes, those do get recorded in my office.
Okay, okay.
Taylor isn't always the one that.
Doesn't.
Inspects them. Various sanitation.
Well, I and I do it, and when I submit the D N R, it goes to the D N R and it goes to Taylor. It goes to the sanitary, so I'm just wondering, just making sure that if it needs to be pushed onto you, or is that basically the attorneys?
I don't want them.
Okay.
Unless the document that we get in our office states that is supposed to be there.
Okay.
We'll contact the attorney.
Okay, the attorneys will probably.
So you don't wanna just send to you on it? No, no, I don't want her email.
Leave that to the attorneys and the realtors then?
Yes, they're, it's, they're responsible to send it with. The transfer document if it's needed, unless it has an exemption statement.
Sure.
Then we don't need them. So if it doesn't come and you know it does, then you contact them for it, yeah, so then why have everyone send right? Yeah.
And sometimes too, they negotiate that new, like the new subject in the price.
Know what, right.
So then we, for the state, if it doesn't meet that criteria. Of of that ninety-five to a hundred and five percent of selling, we make a notation in there that the. Sale price was lower because they more or less paid.
All the the new septic.
The new septic.
The new owners bring up.
But then the new owners are now putting those in.
Have one year usually.
But you know, if it comes in with my office, it states on that groundwater hazard statement. That they've got whether ninety or a hundred and twenty days.
Right, but I I know two, two places.
It's not up to my office.
No, 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 I'm just saying that then just to let you guys. Because they do have a timeframe to put them in, and if they don't put them in.
They should be getting fined with them.
They should be, because it's not bringing then North County up to the state level.
And that actually falls back on the sanitary.
Yes.
That which is me, that's why she's telling me. Whoever signed the forms.
Yeah.
Saying that it, right.
So he, Taylor should be checking.
I was just gonna say, I'll just, I'll just send an email to make sure they're responsible for the.
Yeah, every six months, every six months, you should basically be going through that.
To make sure they're all.
Verify that these three at six months go verify that they got done.
And it got very, right, okay.
Because we just don't wanna go through it again, that when, like, one of the acreages I know of. If if they ever sell it again and they're gonna renegotiate again, well. How far can you renegotiate, you know, a price? Of an acreage, but then never updated. You know, that could go on forever.
And it's updating their.
So they do have a time that they have so long to get it done?
I think so- sometimes it comes in like six months.
Usually six, three months.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would, okay, just wanna make sure I'm talking to Keith and I, okay.
Same, I knew a couple up on me, but they they go.
We'll do our canvas. And then we can have more department discussion.
And we're just gonna go off of. This report. And we'll check again, seeing this is report, this is for the yes and no answers. So. This first one is the southeast, um, you had a hundred and fifty-nine. Yes, to a hundred and eight, no's for a hundred and sixty-seven total.
Yeah.
Um, West Worth County have a hundred and thirty-seven, yes, ten, no. For a hundred and forty-seven.
Yes.
For fertile, sixty-three, yes, three, no, for sixty-six total.
Yep.
Grafton, sixty-seven, yes, four, no, seventy-one.
Yep.
Yellin Town, fifty-eight, yes, four, no, sixty-two. Um, Joyce, forty-three, one for forty-four.
Yep.
And Manly, two hundred and ten, ten for two twenty.
Yep.
Now the write-ins, that's where it gets a little more, so these are okay and these can get signed. Um, the write-ins get a little nupier because people didn't exactly understand. So what we have is. For the the west, we're okay, uh, we have. Al Wogan, Mike Thompson, Josh Brons, Richard Brons, Dwight Brons, um, Al. Received three votes, Mike Thompson, three votes, and then the rest of them received two. And those lists will go to that entity and they'll decide on the three that we're gonna appoint. Is out those, right? I'm supposed to come up with five.
Right.
And they do whatever they do, I'm out.
That's the thing is technically the entity isn't, there's no control or there's no governing body yet, that's what that.
But.
We'll figure that out, I I don't know.
But isn't like, is it like planning and zoning where the city has so many representatives and and then? The townships have so many representatives, or is it just three for the west and the southeast? That's where I don't.
It's, those are completely separate.
Yeah.
The west and the southeast, so there's three and three.
But then, don't, don't each. City.
Each city has.
Will get their own representatives, yes, and that's the way this is set up.
Yeah, so base, I think the way it would go is we, the board supervisors. Maybe the ones to.
East or southeast.
Do the township ones, yeah, but based on the votes is what will go off of, but I think it's, because technically there's no governing body there yet. And so like with the cities, the same thing, I think the council would say, these people receive the votes. This is whose vote getters are, then the any ties will probably draw them back.
And then I'll I'll probably have to make calls and see if they even want it in the first place.
Right.
So that we we might be down to three or less by then anyway.
Yep, yeah.
So I'll put that on the agenda next week.
Okay.
For nominees.
Yeah.
For appointments.
Appointment, basically.
And then the cities can do the same thing.
Okay.
So on the southeast, we need five and you're not in the district. So. Or. Just read that one, I should let me. I gotta look at a sign again. I'm gonna set this up this morning.
We're never doing this again.
Never.
Only way it would go back is if they came in and pitched them to. And then it goes to the same process.
Just gotta worry about ninety-eight counties calling you on how to do it.
Yeah, and you have to elect before you can nominate, I mean, you have to have have a vote.
Yeah.
It's messed up.
And the thing I don't get to is like the future now, so they're staggered one, two, and three year terms now. Next year is just a city and school election. But will that one person be on, first year, will they be on that election and can you run?
And I don't.
Name on the ballot?
And I don't think we can, we couldn't put it with the general, so can we put it with anything else?
It doesn't, it doesn't say, it doesn't, there's like zero guidance to this thing.
Okay, yeah, I I just put the wrong thing, these are southeast, so southeast, we gotta pick. And Justin's not in the southeast, so I guess.
Yes. Justin isn't.
Or yeah, he is.
Yeah, that's the thing, because like Justin Brett and.
Yeah.
Uh, Joe are all in the east portion of Danville. They live in Danville, but they're not a part of the rest portion of Danville district, so their actual trustees. Would not be a part of the western portion, they can be a part of eastern portion, but.
Okay, so yeah.
They all live east of John Paul.
I got this gross, I want that. Big decision there.
Enos Loebert. No. Brad Dietrich.
So, okay, so then are you in west or aren't you in west?
I'm in east.
Or east, sorry, east, I keep saying west.
I live in town, but I also live in the township.
And would you be on both? Because you make the five. So I'm just gonna leave Brad as the. We'll see.
I wanna, I wanna be, I wanna be the last pick.
Oh, come on. Okay, so we got that one. Um. Dwight Brons isn't in city of fertile, so we're taking him out and that gets us down to five. So we have Jeff Berg has three votes, Holly Lovick Hannah has three votes, Penny Miller has two votes, Andy Carlson has two votes. And Sarah Angus has two votes, so that's the five there. Okay, with. Grafton, we have six, so. The last two, Michael Schaub got ten. Chris Brown, eight, Dwayne Tabbert, five, Fulton's Belt. Four, then there were two that got three, so it's Jane DeLee and Steve Yazick that were picking between to break the tie. It's the magic box.
Maybe your name will come out this time. Let me wish. Steve Yazick.
Okay. So that one's fixed. Hey, Yellin Town was good, we have Mike Kennedy of five, if they want it. Um, Peter Backtrude, five, and then the rest of these received four, David Fulton, Patrick Morse, and Linda Fulton. Okay, so for Joyce. We have four. So we have a whole bunch of names. They got a whopping one, so Jane Schaefer got four, Charlie Arndson got three. Which he's another one that he lives outside in a township, not in a city, so that'd be the same as you.
I think he'd have to be in a township one.
Yeah.
Like, I probably have the option to be in the township one, but if he lives in the township, he should be township only, not city.
So we'll pick two of these.
Yeah.
They were just gonna keep.
So I'm done to begin with. Yeah.
But a lot of people got one vote.
Which we need, would you just need one more?
Um, two, if we're gonna take Charlie out.
Yeah, Charlie's not in the city limits, then no, he is not in that district. Ann Martinson. Dean Miller. Just do.
Yep. And so. On. Manly, we have. We have six again, cause we had a tie, so Tim O'Keefe got twelve, Rita Baird, ten, Linda Halfman, nine. Lombard, eight, and then you and Pete got. You'd had there, got a vote, or got five votes, so.
Be good, right?
Eight.
Yeah. So then you can be the township one. Yeah, that's the, that's why I got Brad Hagan, cause um. Cause you would be in in that district technically.
Yeah.
So you. You're the fifth person going by what we've been doing, so we'll skip skip Brad. But then that doesn't mean that, I mean, that you still got a chance, because they only get, there's three of the five that they gotta pick.
Right.
So.
And then Joe.
Joe's, Joe was the first one.
Joe Thompson, Judge of favor. To you.
Mm-hmm. Oh, what, no, sorry, but yeah, southeast, yeah, he was tied with Brad, so they were right below you.
Okay.
Okay, so then, yeah, that is. Yeah.
Okay.
And I will redo these reports and we'll probably sign them next Monday. Or if you're around or whatever, just get them signed and get it all straight and out.
But I think basically we're gonna go top to bottom on that list of winners, offer them. The position, if they take it, they take it, if they don't, I mean, what I mean. But I, the top three obviously get upper first and then, but you have anybody to know that?
I'll work on that, done.
I'm assuming, and I, like, the cities would have to go out and. Confirm matters as well. All right, do we need a motion to approve the canvas? Second, yeah, there's a motion at second to approve the twenty twenty-four EMS special election canvas, any other discussion? Hearing none, all they're right, I opposed. All right, canvas is complete. Any other department had discussion?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, good news is our logger is doing really good that we share with five other entities. Uh, we have eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars in that account. We do have a, we just found out in Waltech that we gotta do some upgrades on that to the tune of eighteen thousand, but we'll use that right out of that logger money that's come in. We will have to look at down the road here, probably three years, replacing that logger. Um, but with twenty-four thousand, they'll run about eighty to a hundred, but we got three more years of bringing twenty-four with eighty-seven in there, we should be fine.
Okay, well, we have to do the seven or the eighteen every year.
We haven't done it every year. This is definitely the second time we've ever done it in six years.
But going forward, is it gonna be a?
It won't be every year. It'll be probably every two, three years, so. Right now, it's running on its own and it's going pretty smooth, except for our side billing, but I think we might have that. Straightened out, that goes back to Sam again. Um, the expedition is back, um, we are sending the bill down to Kel-Tec for that, it was about four grand to replace that heater corded, but uh, screw it to it.
The only reason I ask is we just paid for it in January of twenty-three and we're gonna be doing it again, so if it's gonna be an annual thing, I just wanted to know for budget.
I don't see it as an annual, it's gonna, I mean, it'll be as needed, I mean, it's updates and an A I address and all that stuff.
But most of that shouldn't get discovered anymore.
Most, yeah, now it's telling you, cause we're pulling in right at twenty-four thousand a year with. We've got Chickasaw, clearly, I mean, Sarah Bordeaux, Winnebago and Hancock County that are, and we. We don't, there is a little room left on the logger, but I don't wanna max it out, so I don't wanna, we could have added more, but I don't feel that good. Optimal for us.
And it's time to discuss with, uh, Winnebago and Hancock again.
And Joel has a difference of opinion on that, um, that it kind of runs forward. I will do some checking on that, because I think we need to also talk about, everything else has gone up, that maybe we need to up our price on. So Joel and I will have a discussion on that.
Just their contracts up and we need to start a new contract.
They just said we'll talk in five years, but there's also language in there that says everything's going well, just let it go, keep going, so.
The cost.
But the cost or anything like say going up, so it doesn't need to have some kind of.
Probably some sort of increase, cause I mean, it's nice helping them out, but we can't do it at our, at our expense, we gotta make sure it covers. So, yeah, okay, well, when that time comes, will you be here yet, or is that a new sheriff like?
Um, we'll have the conversations yet this fall if we need to.
Okay. That sounds good. All right, anything else?
That's it.
Other department heads?
I'll just be gone tomorrow, down to the Public Health Collaborative, that's required of the grant to go, so I'll be down with the boy, I'll be tomorrow. But otherwise, our new employee, our new nurse is working on good, we increased our admits to service already. From what we were doing prior, so.
Vaccinations.
Oh, God, yeah, we have Vax Care guy, we met with him, Lexan, I met with him a couple of weeks ago. And we're gonna meet with him after the Board of Health meeting that we have on the twenty-third, and we're gonna get that going, because then we can have all the vaccines we need. And it's really good news when I talked to him last week, cause epinephrine is really hard to get and we have to have it, and it's five hundred dollars now. For twenty-five single dose vials, and we have to have it, giving any immunizations, flu clinics, anything. This fall, I did, um, call Winnebago County Public Health and we're splitting it with them, so that worked out really good, but going forward. Vax Care, that's part of their services, it's in the, in all the, everything we get with all the new vaccines, Epi is included into it. So it's no cost to us, it's an amazing program, so we're excited to get it going. So we'll be able to have shingles vaccine, we'll be able to have R S V, the adult, anything, so.
Yeah. When are you getting that, did you say?
So we meet them again after the twenty-third, our Board of Health meeting, cause I wanted to make sure we got okay with them, and then he said. To get it going takes about forty-five to sixty days to get everything in and, cause we basically get. Phones is how you kind of use it, they get, it's not a phone, but it looks like that, the vaccine comes in, we scan the barcode. So they know that we used one, we administer it, and as it gets low, they send us a new one, so it takes time to fill all that up. Initially, and then give us a little bit of training of how to use it, so, but I'm probably after the first of the year, I'm guessing. We'll just, cause we're right in the midst of flu clinics now, we're starting this weekend, we're gonna be so busy with that. We didn't want him to come in and fill up our fridge yet with that, so. But as soon as we can do that, maybe even by the first of December, depending, it, it's on their side now. How long it takes for us to get it in there, we just have to get some papers signed, as soon as we do, they're moving forward. Well, we're very excited about that, cause that will bring in money, lots of different avenues of getting money, cause we can bill all. Different insurances and Medicaid and United Healthcare and.
Good.
Yeah.
It's a good plan.
Yeah.
Good I can have in the county too.
Yes.
Yeah. Right, and other department heads. Supervisor Weekly.
I had Partners for Children, we basically went through the financials. Which are minor, because it's school-based and the bills have not come in yet. Um, the only other thing we've basically decided was. The director has an office both in Cheryl City and Mason City, she comes to Mason City once a week. And nobody goes in to talk to her directly, they made basically email. So we decided to close that office and for office in Mason, just never stay in Cheryl City the whole. So, other than that, I had North Side Children's Alliance. And there we just, the state changed a lot of policies for board meetings and stuff, and we had to approve all of that. Uh, we looked at the funding. Uh, they discussed preschool scholarships and what had been spent, and of course for Worth County.
Yeah.
We don't get into that at all because of W C E A. And then they talked, we had somebody talk a little bit about E S R and mental health. And biggest problem we have is getting consultants.
Yeah, we're working on that, I put on that board with the US as well, and the director and myself are working on trying to get a provider. Someone that will come into Worth County and do some mental health if we need that. We're working on that. It's very much needed, it's just to find a provider that not only will want to, but has the time, cuz they're pulled in. Fifty different directions now for people who are trained in that.
It's hard to do, so. Other than that, I went, and then I went Thursday night, I went to that Summit Carbon Pipeline meeting. That was quite interesting. Got a lot of information. Got a lot of feedback. So.
That it?
Yes, that was about it, I have a question about that, because we got a letter from their lawyer. And we're supposed to provide the name of a county inspector or professional engineer, and that was brought up at the meeting. Have we done that?
No, sorry, I've been reached out to by I S G. Um, so I went and actually contacted Jacob Pagan and asked about if that's something they did, we had to work with them. Uh, he said they, they do not offer that, but they're working with. Uh, Snyder Associates, and he gave me some contact info. He said they're not actually inspectors doing it, but they're gonna work with Snyder Associates on certain things with drainage. Pertaining to drainage and all that on the inspection portion, so it's a contactless lady, so I'll do that.
I just, I know they, we needed to get one.
Yeah, yeah, I'll do that, like I said, I S G has contacted me about it, but I. Wanted a second opinion, so I figured out asking engineer, and that's kind of what Jacob said, is you do, you do what you want, but. This is some cool, they're gonna work with a little bit, so.
The timeframe on that?
Um, supposedly, we were supposed to have it in, they wanted it kind of in place by September twelfth, which was the meeting night. Cuz they brought it up at the meeting round there, but but nobody, but there's not, there's not a timeline here, just said, according to I O code, you need to do this.
Yeah, somebody came to us and said, you have thirty days to, just, uh, we need to appoint somebody.
Yeah, I didn't read any place in here where there was a timeline.
Timeline, yeah.
Probably at least by the time we're digging.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
But, yeah, it's, they said the information. Will be provided to the I U C landowners and other affected persons at the informational meeting. So I imagine as they go out and they talk to landowners now, cuz they can, if somebody should ask them, they don't have a name, so. But just something we need to get done.
Mark, you have any?
I didn't know. I had, uh, Nyco on Monday night. Um, first time we met in about four months to. Three months, I should say, three months, um, we don't meet in July and Myrtle was recovering from surgery in August, so we. Early caught up. Looks good there, they're having, uh. She did an annual report presentation and, um. A lot of the grant stuff is kind of coming back a little heavier as far as remodeling homes, uh. And then they work with like I E D A and some of their catalyst grants, uh, for the lower story. Retail upper story housing, those kind of grants, um, then they've given out. Oh, like twenty million dollars in grants since two thousand, I think, so. There's been a lot of money that's gone through Nyco and come back into this area, so it's kind of good things, um, but they're kind of ramping back up on that stuff again, so. Hopefully, there's more to, more to see in the future, uh, through the southern county region, so. Other than that, it was a lot of financial stuff to catch up on. But to me, Thursday night also, um, very interesting, I'll give it that, gathered a bunch of information and. Um. And to see where it goes from there, you know, zoning's got our. Um, working on the ordinance and I think we'll see something in October on that. Um, but they were planning to try to get a meeting in and get started, so. We'll see what they come up with, open there, yeah, so. Anything needs to go on?
Do you go to Rob Sand?
Yeah, if nothing else, uh, would entertain a motion to adjourn?
I would like a motion to adjourn for a second.
All in favor, I.
Employee handbook workshop, who all comes to that?
You.
Okay, nobody from the board is what I was kind of getting at.
I I put it, I posted it for everybody, so anybody can, all supervisors, it'll be typically via meeting, open.
But we, we recommend.
Yep.
Uh, department heads, so we can incorporate.